Agenda.
Yeah.
I have like.
Game.
Me too. And I was like, he's doing this and he messages and says, I think you're gonna need to do it.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be.
You'll be.
Um.
I mean for dogs.
I know.
But in the context of all penalty means that are going tonight maybe. Oh, we have an audit too. Don't wait that.
I was taking starts at eight, so.
Oh, we'll be there.
Oh, we'll be there. Did you watch the basketball game in the women's? Oh, my. That was a good game.
Four was better. Yeah, the other one too late. It was good. It's still.
Six. It's six. Okay.
You're up.
So do I just open the fair housing board meeting?
Hey, you're down.
Yeah. John never hits his gavel.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh. Roll call.
Roll call first. Okay, roll call.
Abby Hansen.
Here.
John Hawkins. Megan McFarland.
Here.
Matt McKinney.
Here.
Logan Welch.
Okay, I will open the fair housing board meeting.
We do have a motion to approve that. Or no, that's right. You're right. Okay.
I was gonna say it's up here. Yeah.
I will not say anything else.
No, you're fine. I need all the help I can get. Um, so do I just read the motion then?
Mm hmm.
Okay. The motion on approval of agenda, A, motion on minutes of January fifteen. Oh, motion on approval of agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then these are all business items, so you can go down them.
Same.
Yeah. They can approve it collectively.
Uh. Do they have to name the chairperson, vice chairperson?
Oh, right. Okay, I'll do them individually then.
Okay.
We have A, motion on minutes of January fifteen twenty four.
I'm to approve.
Okay.
All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. B, motion to elect chairperson and vice chairperson. Currently, it is John Hawkins and Logan Welch.
Move to approve. Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sound. C, motion on appointment by the chairperson of the investigating committee and such other offices as the board may decide as provided by the Code of Ordinances of the City of Webster City, Iowa, two thousand and nineteen, Chapter twenty eight, Article two, Section twenty eight to twenty seven. Currently, it is John Herenstein, Sherry. Simmons. Oh, it says city clerk and community development director.
Uh, and let's make that an amendment to, uh, the city manager, deputy city clerk, and the community development director.
Oh, deputy. Okay. So is that me?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome aboard.
And then air.
Moving over.
Oppose, same sign. And then.
Are there any other?
Any other matters that may come before the board? Okay. Um, adjourn fair housing board meeting.
Move to approve. Question.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Both same sign. Okay. Uh, move to approve the regular city council meeting.
If you do a roll call.
Yeah. Abby Hansen.
Here.
John Hawkins. Megan McFarland.
Here.
Matt McKinney.
Here.
John Welch.
We agents sue by the United States of America, exonerate bodily which it stands on a nation under India's own.
The agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proves or both same sign. One petitions communications request. This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. No more than five minutes per person, except in cases of emergency. The city council will not take any action at this meeting, but may ask the city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Does anyone have anything? Okay, we have A, public information. Two. Consent agenda. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial. Routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Um, we, we have A, minutes of January twenty twenty five, regular city council meeting, B, claims including payroll ending January twenty five or twenty five and fund list. C, recommend approval for issuance of beer and liquor licenses by the Iowa Department of Commerce for the following. Approve ownership update amendment for Dollar General number twenty four twenty one, eight fourteen Superior Street. D, approve entering into a three-year farm lease, March one, two thousand and twenty five to February twenty eight, two thousand and twenty eight, with Brock Miller at nineteen forty six Blueberry Hill Drive, Webster City, Iowa, on city-owned property. E, approve entering into a three-year farm lease, March one twenty five to February twenty eight, two thousand and twenty eight, with Travis Verda at nineteen seventy three Xavier Avenue, Dunkham, Iowa, on city-owned property. Hmm, I need a motion to approve the consent items.
Anything to add on those farm leases before we collect anybody?
Oh. Uh, yeah, just providing a summary of the, uh, information that was included in the, uh, agenda statement. These are two farms that are currently owned by, uh, the city of Webster City. One is commonly referred to as the Water Tower Farm. Uh, it was near the Water Tower on Highway twenty. The other is, uh, Forty Acre Parcel that is on, uh, what I would call Beet Street or, um, but does it become Tunnel Mill, uh, directly across from, um, Mr. Habhab's residence? Uh, it also abuts Highway twenty. Um. We are recommending renewing the lease with these two tenants. Uh, they are, you know, in, in your, uh, previously, this would have been the year that you went out to RFP, uh, in regards to the Water Tower Farm, uh, because there was planning involved to go, uh, on with the, uh, new wastewater plant. The tenant was, um, terminated on a portion of the farm, uh, and did not seek to renew it. We were fortunate enough to find another renter for it. Uh, and, uh, in recognition of them coming in late in the season, we are recommending that we extend them for the three years and then also continue with the former tenant on the smaller parcel that is, uh, uh, on the Tunnel Mill Road for the three years. Uh, the rents, uh, negotiated range from three hundred to three hundred and thirty-five dollars per acre. Uh, annual revenue to the city for those leases is approximately forty-three thousand dollars.
Move to approve A through E.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, we'll go on to the general agenda. A is presentation by Williams and Company PC on the twenty-three twelfth for the city of Webster City, Iowa. Who in us present?
Hello. Um, yeah, I'm the man in school. So I led the audit this year for the fiscal year of twenty-fourth. Um, you guys, I'll, I'll have that with you. Um, I'm gonna take a really high level. You know, this is over a hundred pages. So if you have questions, if you're going through it, you can always contact me. Doty has my information. Um, but there are a few things that I just wanna cover with you guys today. Um, so the first is just on page four, the audit opinion itself. Um, this is just saying it's unmodified, so no issues, um, clean finding. Um. And yeah, there's just a lot of, um, jargon in there that you can read. They not. Um, the next thing is just hopping over to the general funds, which is page nineteen. Um, we kind of do a quick analysis on this just to show you if your revenue stopped suddenly, how long could you survive on your fund balance? And so, um, last year was, uh, three hundred and sixty days. So what we do is we take total expenditures divided by three hundred and fifty-five days, um, get a number, divide that by your fund balance and see how long you can last. Um, so this year it was two hundred and eight days. Um, the reason for that big jump were some big capital expenditures in the public safety. Um, but really, we look for that ninety to a hundred and twenty days, since that's kind of when property tax will kick back in. Um, so really healthy still looking there. Um. Yeah, your utility funds, page twenty-two and twenty-three, uh, that operating income, all positive. Um, so want, yeah, kind of take note of that. Still ended with operating income overall for utilities, two point five million there, so. Yeah, and then your budget. Um, yeah, it's difficult to to say not over your disbursement. So if you have anything that does go over, um, that is advised by us to report to the state of Iowa. So there were three functions there, but everything looks good, um, as well. There was a single audit this year. Um, so the audits are if you get federal funding and you need more additional requirements of compliance testing. The last time we did that for you guys was twenty twenty-one, related to some airport grants, um, this year related to that ARPA funding that you guys received, um, that you guys use for some projects. Um. So yeah, and then the last, last thing I just wanna point out, um, page ninety-seven, that's where we summarize those findings related to the single audit, um, some other statutory findings for the state. Uh, if you have any questions, let me know. Uh, we did report one finding on there. It's, you know, the standard that we have for all auditors that have is perfection. It's really hard to attain. So that finding that's listed there, um, yeah, just saying that we had to, uh, propose some entries and that's typical. Over ninety percent of all cities get that finding, so. Any questions or anything else anyone wants to go over?
Um, I'd just like to, uh, express our thanks. The auditing firm, uh, was really, uh, smooth audit and appreciate your firm working so closely and well with our staff. Also wanna give this opportunity to thank, uh, Doty Wolfgram for her leadership of the city's finances. This is, you know, year, pick a decade of clean audits, uh, over the, under the, uh, leadership of Doty and her staff, the finance office. Uh, so, you know, one thing the public can be reassured of is that their funds are being, uh, protected and adequately, uh, appropriately spent on items that have been approved by the public and the city council. So just thank you, Doreen, for everything we do.
Thank you. Okay, um. Call for a motion accepting and placing on file the twenty-three twenty-four city of Webster City audit.
Let me back up. Can we get a motion to accept the audit? You guys already do it?
I think that's what I just had.
Oh, okay, ours. Sorry.
To approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same signs. Okay, we have a public hearing. Six oh five. We have B, public hearing on designation of the twenty twenty-five Webster City Housing Urban Renewal Area and on Urban Renewal Plan and Project. I'm opening the hearing. Any written objections?
No.
Any oral objections? Close the hearing. Go on.
Yes. Uh, this is a public hearing on the, uh, twenty twenty-five Webster City Housing Urban Renewal Area and on the Urban Renewal Area project. Uh, so there's no action for item B. The action, uh, would be on item C, which is the resolution to declare, uh, necessity and establish urban renewal area for councils public and for the viewing public. The councils benefit and for the benefit of viewing public. I will simply go through as expeditiously as possible, uh, the urban renewal plan for, uh, Webster City, which is called the twenty twenty-five Webster City Housing Urban Renewal Plan. The introduction of this plan goes at, uh, the length into somewhat of the history of urban renewal in Iowa, the certain authorities that are given to Webster City to, uh, engage in activities of urban renewal. Uh, section two is a description of the ur- urban renewal area. Uh, the description of that is, uh, the legal description of the property that is, uh, by and large described as twenty-eight acres along Wall Street in Webster City, Iowa, uh, that is abutting the most furthest west development on the north side of the road there. Um. Section three is urban renewal objectives. I will go through a few of them, uh, to contribute to a well-balanced economy, to assist, to assist in providing land and resources for new and expanded residential development that's efficient to stimulate through public action commitment to private investment and residential development through the, um, various use of federal, state, and local incentives to provide municipal infrastructure, uh, in areas, uh, that enhance the possibility for economic development and private enterprise, to help assist financing the costs of streets, water, sanitary storm sewer, or other public improvements, to provide a more marketable and attractive investment climate, to increase the number of housing units within the city that are safe, attractive, and comfortable, to provide public facilities to enhance city services, and to provide assistance for housing on a citywide basis, basis to families whose incomes are no greater than eighty percent of the median income in Hamilton County. Urban renewal projects and activities, uh, the following types of activities are examples of specific actions which may be undertaken by the city in these areas. Preparation of plans related to development, construction of public improvements, construction of buildings or s- specific site improvements, acquisition, preparation, and disposition of property, making available as appropriate financing for development, including conventional borrowing and tax increment financing as a result from increased property values, as well as, um, seeking grants or other types of tax increment rebates, uh, to people engaged in economic development within the area. Chapter or section five of the plan is the specific urban renewal project. Uh, the name of project is the residential subdivision development project that is proposed for the area. Um. The, uh, developer is undertaking, uh, development of a residential subdivision and, uh, as well as corresponding construction of public infrastructure. The addition of new residential housing in the city will enhance the quality of life of the city, thereby resulting in commercial and residential growth. It's been requested that the city provide tax increment financing to the developer in support of, uh, the efforts to complete the infrastructure project. Um, the description of the use of TIF. The city intends, uh, to enter into a development agreement with the developer with respect to the construction of the housing project and infrastructure project. Um, and the requested payments have been for an amount not to exceed four million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be funded with incremental property tax. In addition, uh, the developers requested the use of an economic development grant, which is a term that is, um, sort of in Iowa statutes best describes city contributions, uh, other than TIF in the district. Uh, that amount of the grant is one point two million. Uh, the grant will be the lesser of either one point two million or twenty percent of the infrastructure costs and is being considered, uh, because it includes payments for the extension of Wall Street and Lynx Avenue, which are public thoroughfares, uh, used not only by the development, but the traveling public in Webster City. In addition, uh, funds derived from the taxes collected in this area will be used, uh, for a low to moderate income set aside. I wanna clarify because there have been questions during this process for the public whether or not those low to moderate income funds are being collected or will be dispersed within this development. Um, the, the answer is no. The development is market rate housing. Uh, LMI set asides are part of Iowa statutes. If you provide TIF for a housing project, a portion of that must be set aside equal to the, uh, uh, number of those in your community that are at, at a percentage of the population. Uh, that percent of the property tax collected that would be used for the increment is actually deducted from the payment, deposited into the city, uh, fund, and then the city can engage in efforts for low to moderate income, uh, throughout the city, not necessarily in this urban renewal area. So I just wanna be clear, we did have some questions. If this is a low to moderate income development, it is not. It is a market rate housing, but as a result of the Iowa statute, funds will be collected for the purposes of low to moderate income households in the community. Uh, that can be set aside at the council's discretion later on. Uh, item, uh, section six of the plan is the land use plan and proposed development. Uh, we've adopted a comprehensive land use plan. The planning commission has met and deemed that this is consistent with that comprehensive land use plan. Um, and, uh, that's the, the main portion of section six. Section seven goes into quite detail about how the TIF will be collected and calculated and distributed to the developer, uh, according to Iowa statutes. Um. Section seven is again discussion of how that assistance to low and moderate income families may be dispersed by the city. Uh, section nine, I'm sorry, that was section eight. Section nine is the effective period, the amount of years, um, um, that, uh, the TIF can be collected. Uh, currently, the plan says the urban renewal plan will become effective upon its adoption by the city council and remain in effect until it's repealed. The collection of incremental property tax in the urban renewal area will continue for the maximum number of years authorized by chapter four oh three unless otherwise determined by action of city council. Uh, we know that the amount requested by the developer of the four and a half million dollars will take approximately fifteen years, and that's what they requested. The maximum number of time that you may collect it in the district is twenty. Um, but, uh, that's how the attorneys have, have written it. Uh, section ten, um, overview is plan amendments, and then section eleven gives the financial information of the, uh, the plan. That concludes my report on the plan. For the purposes of the public hearing, I can answer any questions. Um. If you've got any. All right.
I'll go on to C.
Yes.
C, resolution to declare necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to section four oh three point four of the Code of Iowa and approve urban renewal plan and project for the two thousand and twenty-five Webster City Housing Urban Renewal Area.
Yes, and so this resolution essentially adopts this plan, uh, and, uh, will, will enact it. Can you answer any questions on the specifics of the resolution if you have any?
No, no questions.
I don't have any.
Move to approve. Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. D, consider first reading of ordinance providing the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the two thousand and twenty-five Webster City Housing Urban Renewal Area pursuant to section, section four zero three point one nine of the Code of Iowa.
Um, this is the ordinance that, um, is part, uh, is required after adopting the urban renewal plan by the resolution you have to, um, provide for the collection of the property taxes through the tax increment financing and then dispersing them to the developer. Uh, so that's what this resolution, um, sets forward. I'm sorry, this, this ordinance sets forward. Uh, this would be the first reading of the ordinance, and because we do not have, um, Mayor Hawkins or Counselor Welch, we don't have four fifths, so we can't waive the second and third reading. So we'll continue to do readings on that, uh, throughout the next couple of meetings.
Make it a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. E, consider resolution setting a date of meeting in which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with Wilson Estates LLC, including annual appropriation tax increment payments, February seventeenth at six oh five P M.
So this is the actual development agreement. Um, you know, we, we could, uh, just wrap this into the TIF, uh, ordinance or agreement. Um, but I believe that, uh, you know, the, the attorneys and developers have requested that we work, uh, with a document, uh, of this nature. I'm gonna walk through, um, the, the document, and then this would be the development agreement between the developer and the city on the project, the housing project and the infrastructure project. Um, there are several whereas's, uh, that really describe a lot of what I've already, um, talked about in the urban renewal plan. Jumping to the now, uh, therefore, um, it's resolved that, uh, at February seventeenth, you'll take up this, um, this, uh, this development agreement, uh, that will provide notice. Uh, let me skip towards the actual agreement, which is attached to the resolution. Um. The, the section of the development agreement, uh, the developer agrees to cause construction of the housing project in accordance with preliminary plat to be approved by the planning commission, city council, and city engineer by August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five, set forth, uh, on exhibit B here too. Uh, the developer has not submitted all of them yet, so when we adopt this, we will, uh, adopt this contingent on receiving those, uh, documents, which they plan to submit at some point in time in February. Um, prior to beginning the construction of the housing project, the developer will subdivide the property in accordance with applicable ordinances and regulations. So that's the housing project. That's the two hundred and eighteen units. It's roughly the twenty-eight million dollar project. Now we go to the infrastructure project. That's the five and a half million dollars, uh, of which, uh, um, they're requesting TIF reimbursement for four and a half. The developer agrees to cause the construction, the infrastructure project in accordance with the timeline specifications set forth on exhibit C. In addition, we will accept a tighter timeframe. Um, uh, so we'll, we'll add that to the conditions of the, uh, to the, uh, adopting this agreement. Um. Prior to constructing the infrastructure project, developer will submit copies of engineering documents related to proposed infrastructure project, and the city may reasonably change such documents to ensure compliance, uh, for that. Uh, nothing in the subsection will be interpreted as limiting the rights of the city not to accept the work if the infrastructure is not completed to satisfaction of the city. Uh, moving to section three, documentation, that is essentially how the developer will reimburse, uh, be reimbursed with tax increment financing. So they have to, um, submit costs, uh, to us, receipts of the work that, that it's been paid. Um, those costs will go onto a document that Doty and I maintained, and that will, um, amount to what's eligible for reimbursement. Um, item four goes into developer certification, and that goes into the timing of the TIF. So during construction, the TIF would not be paid. They'll come to us after so many homes are built and ready to go on and be collected from, and it's referred to as triggering certifications in this section, but that's what, uh, section four goes over. Uh, section five is property, uh, tax payment, um, certification, uh, and also discusses some of the reimbursement requirements that are, uh, asked of the developer. Uh, item six is events of default, uh, which are failure by developer to cause construction of the housing project, failure developer to complete construction of the infrastructure, uh, failure to comply with the reporting requirements and things like that, and failure to, uh, observe or perform other material covenant on its part. Um, there's provision for notices and remedies, uh, that include, um, pursuing different actions or terminating the agreement. Item seven outlines that the city will be reimbursed at least fifteen thousand dollars for the cost of, uh, developing these documents, uh, uh, administering TIF. B of the agreement goes into the city's covenants, which is reviewing cost documentation, uh, and, uh, discusses the economic development grant. In section two, which is equal to the lesser of twenty percent of the demonstrated infrastructure costs or one point two million. Uh, section three goes into the tax increment payments. Uh, there's a long discussion in that section, uh, and essentially outlines what's required through Iowa statute, uh, for, uh, the developer to be, um, to be paid, but that also, um, outlines payments beginning in December twenty-eight and continuing, including sooner of June forty, twenty forty-three. So that goes back to the length of the district and things like that, but I wanna assure that, uh, this is a fifteen-year TIF, uh, for, for. Uh, annual appropriation is simply, uh, TIF in Iowa is subject to the annual appropriation authority of the city. You go and you come and certify these TIF agreements and, uh, certify them to the, um, to the county, uh, auditor, and then, uh, annual appropriation. So that's at your discretion. Payment amounts, uh, in section five speaks to how the payments are split. There's two payments, one in the beginning of the year and one in the end of the year coinciding with property tax payments. Uh, item six discusses the low to moderate income set aside, which is forty-one point seven two percent. Um. Item seven certi- certi- certification, certification of payment obligation, um, that we would certify to, uh, Hamilton County Auditor, uh, the, uh, the. that we would certify to Hamilton County Auditor, the 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 TIF district. Section C is administrative provisions that are fairly standard for legal agreements. And then there are some attachments with the description of the property, preliminary plat for housing, timeline and specification of the infrastructure project. So I do recommend you adopt this development agreement, and then maybe the discussion points here are in the exhibit B, we have the developers indicated initial submissions will be made to the city engineer by February twenty first, and the objective is city council consider the site plan at its last meeting of March and the timeline and specifications for the infrastructure project. Developers indicated the infrastructure project will commence no later than August twenty sixth and completed by August of twenty seven. But should be the timeline should be submitted to the council no later than August twenty fifth. So I don't know how you want to handle that in terms of the conditions of your adoption, but I would recommend probably the preliminary plat for the housing by end of February, Chase? Or do you want to go end of March?
March, last council meeting is the seventeenth.
Yeah.
We do it then?
Yeah.
Do? I think Mark will be faster than that.
Okay. Certainly. John, are you fine with that? So March seventeenth, so motion to approve when you get to that point with the condition that the preliminary plat for housing is received by February seventeenth, and the timeline for the infrastructure project is submitted by when?
Same date.
Okay. So if I would craft a motion that you might consider, my recommendation would be that you move to accept the adopt the resolution setting the hearing with the conditions that the preliminary plat for housing and timeline for infrastructure be received by February twenty first of two thousand twenty five.
February or March?
March.
March twenty first? That'd be after we'd have it approved.
Are you, so for, you're just saying the first submittal of the site plan in the preliminary plat?
We just need a date when you're gonna submit it.
Okay, yeah, I'd be, I'd imagine it'd be earlier than March for the first submittal to, for review, you mean?
Yeah.
We could do, yeah, we could do February, yeah.
February seventeenth one?
February seventeen.
Okay, so.
Two weeks.
Everybody knows it's two weeks away.
I I I'd take the March date. I mean, we're fine adopting with conditions. March third.
Go change this date to March third.
Yep.
So do I need to read it? Or can they just approve March third at six oh five?
Mister Chief.
So you say you're setting the February seventeenth still at six oh five?
But it'll be for the
For the March third?
Exhibit's being seen.
So we're gonna set the result, let me let me make it maybe easier for everyone. We really only need to set the public hearing at this time. By the time they come back to have this public hearing and consider development agreement, we can decide on the dates when they'll submit their
Whether it's March third.
That might make it easier.
So don't change anything in this.
I apologize for confusing.
It's Monday, so it's
Move to approve to set the public hearing for February seventeenth, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. F, resolution accepting permanent and temporary easement agreement from the owners of property Kendrick K Chezick and Zachary S Chezick.
So similar to the easement that you adopted, I believe this is the same exact easement with the exception of a portion of the easement property that goes over property owned by Mister and Mrs. Chezick and will be used for extending sanitary sewer to the development.
I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. G, consider resolution to accept and approve the final plat and off offer of dedication of Lynx Development in Webster City, Iowa.
Yes. Well. So before you, you've got a recommendation to accept the final plat of the Lynx Development. This was a plat the council most recently considered in two thousand twenty. The Lynx Development includes the two eighty unit apartments that have been built along Edgewood Drive.
Thirty, thirty units.
Two thirty unit properties, yes, my apologies. As you're aware, since the time of the last consideration of this plat, there's been, there were some conditions in the the resolution that the the council had requested before it would be formally approved. That those conditions and sort of the discussion with the developer have never really been resolved. And and so let me go into those conditions. The first was a fifty thousand, well, as everybody in the community is aware, the roads have not been opened. There's been no additional development on that site since two thousand twenty or whenever the apartments were finished. And it's been locked in a, it's been frozen for various reasons that both, I believe, the city and the developer feel strongly about and have for a long time. Last week, we met with the developer, Mister Dean Quirk, and had a long discussion about what might be possible for opening the development. And there were several items we discussed, one of which was acceptance and adoption of the plat to begin moving past some of the issues that have been preventing this area of the community from being developed. So going back to the specific issue with the plat, there were five ish, five conditions. One was the fifty thousand performance bond or a check to be deposited in an escrow account, likely for presumed efficiencies in the infrastructure that at the time the city had concerns over. Since this time has passed, I can verify that the developer does not currently hold any performance bond on the site, is not paying any premium for it, and so the city could not collect on any performance bond because one does not exist. In addition, the developer would be unlikely to obtain one due to the length of time the infrastructure's already been installed. Our engineering review, and John Haldeman is here to speak on these matters, indicates some heaving in the stormwater portion of the sewer, as well as some cracking in the sewer pipes, but these do not present an issue to the traveling public or the public walking there or living there at this time, nor do we anticipate it will. The developer is not interested in depositing fifty thousand dollars check into an escrow account. So our recommendation at this time is to resolve this matter likely during a renegotiated TIF agreement or accept the condition of the infrastructure as something the city will just need to address in the future as part of our routine maintenance to the area in five to fifteen years. I I would ask just at this portion and then portion, John, can you speak a little bit to these issues and and advise the council as to the risks that the present? If that's fine with you, Mrs. Hands.
Do you want to pull up those five? Let me see, John, you
Can you scroll to the 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 down in the background, keep going down to the old the plat that had the conditions there?
There you go. John, you spoke on item one there. Item number two, we did obtain, developer did obtain that incident from Bob Band East that runs along the west side of Edgewood, has a drainage ditch that the outlet from that development flows through. Item number three was had a point of contention between the city and the developer, but the city felt like the developer didn't address stormwater issues. What we decided is that we can address those once the south farm field develops. So then we'll be able to carry that stormwater through and outlet into the DOT right away. Then number four. I I don't, I've never seen any of the covenants. My understanding is those detention basins are responsibility of the development to take care of, and they're not the city's. And then finally, the compliance tests, as we all know, they didn't do the compliance test, so Brandon had the storm sewer videoed, the sanitary sewer video, that's where we found the the crack in in the storm sewer pipe. And then the sanitary sewer still has the sags in it. Doesn't appear the sags have gotten worse, and those items are just something we'll have to keep an eye on with the annual videoing that occurs. And then I think the last thing with the tests, where they didn't do many PCC pavement testing, and now that the paving occurred five and a half years ago, and Brandon and I have both done some drive-throughs along the roads, we haven't seen any noticeable cracking or heaving or sagging, so with time on our side, so to speak, we feel like the pavement we feel comfortable enough where we can accept it with what's been paid out there. Then there were some other little miscellaneous punchless items that they didn't address after construction, and we feel like a lot of those we can address when the homes are built. So I'd be happy to answer.
Well, the areas that have some deficiencies, you know, worst case scenario, five years from now, we're having to make some repairs. I guess I just want to know. Obviously, you're not a contractor as far as giving the exact cost, but the reason we've held off at this point has been just due to concerns of not having the testing. We don't want to be stuck putting the taxpayers on a million dollar payment in five years to fix things, so how extensive of an area are we talking about that has some deficiency? And if we had to make repairs, what would that look like?
In regard to the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer quite four to six spot repairs for these crack or disjointed pipes are. So it would involve removing a panel or two of the pavement, excavating down, putting a collar on the pipe or put a new pipe in. The sanitary sewer sagging is currently compliant, it's not sagged beyond a half inch. So we'll continue to keep an eye on that. Even if the sagging does get worse, we can evaluate at that time is, and the sag pipe still handling well through it and not cause any backups, so there's some flexibility there. And then as as far as the pavement goes, if we do get some cracking or panel movement, that would be added to the annual patching program. I think one of the things with sitting there for five and a half years, granted, there hasn't been traffic on it.
Right.
But I think if there was some compaction issues below, and I think we would have seen something by now. And then certainly when the homes start getting built, you get that construction traffic driving on the roads, then that if it hasn't shown anything at that point, it certainly will when that occurs.
Yeah, the way I look at it, I mean, we're we're trying to weigh, you know, a lot of people want to see it open, and and my understanding is it is now at this point versus the the, you know, the risk of having issues down the road. So from your perspective, the the risk is minimal.
Yes. You know, I think it's a the city is faced with a particular issue where you have infrastructure installed that's not being maximized. And so through this action, you're taking ownership of it, right? This is the 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 deeding of the infrastructure to you and the the plat and everything. We also have a situation where developers installed it and not been compensated for fair reasons because they didn't submit the the receipts yet, and so we have to work through those issues. So I think what we're engaged in right now is a sort of a step of goodwill on the developer's part because they opened the roads, traveling public is now using them. We've installed the signs, we've got that, so the public's on them, right? Public's using them. If they're not, then, you know, we have to ask a decision if if we're going to put the signs up and close it. So it's it's sort of our step forward in this, hopefully, era of goodwill that we're accepting it. We're going to try to maximize its benefit for the public here. I'm not here to say that we're out of the woods with any conflicts between the city and the developer right now. But I think in the last two weeks, we've seen meaningful movement on both sides here with opening of the roads and acceptance of the plat to get this now developed to the maximum benefit of the public and the city. So I I do recommend that you approve the plat and take this step given the engineer's review and my discussion with the developer last week and the openings of the roads.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have motion?
Second.
All of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. H, consider payment of workforce tax credit housing match for Lynx Development that were not paid previously.
That is H. Well, this same developer, same development. Different question. So back in two thousand seventeen, and I believe in two thousand eighteen, Zach is the next one? Twenty nineteen. The developer requested that the city participate in their application for workforce housing tax credits through the state of Iowa. I have confirmed not only through these documents but by with conversations at the department that those, the developer did indeed receive these tax credits. That application includes a application of support for a hundred, for a thousand dollars per units. That's where you get the sixty two thousand dollars. City, because of the disputes with the developer, never paid those. The, in my conversation with the developer a few weeks ago, he requested that the city pay those. And so I'm coming to the council and asking whether or not you would like to pay those. I can provide additional information on this matter if you if you'd like.
Well, looking back, I guess for one thing, I for whatever reason, I was not aware that we hadn't, we passed to support the project at the time. I think we have to follow through with what we approved originally.
Did these payments also accrue to the apartment units that were built?
What do you mean?
The two thirty unit apartment buildings, the the thousand dollar payments would also apply there.
That's what they
That's what this is.
Okay, not for any future development.
Just for the current.
I see. Thank you.
I see. Right, thank you.
I wasn't, I mean, I agree. I wasn't really present for that, but.
Right. Yes. No.
No. It was a PUD, planned urban development.
There you go.
PUD?
PUD. All the acronyms.
It is not, uh, and it is not a subsidized housing, uh, apartment.
The move to approve second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sound, sign. I consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an industrial sewer user waiting services agreement between the city of Webster City, Iowa and Webster City Custom Minks.
I'd like to invite, I'm sorry, thank you. I'd like to invite Darren Jacobs from Snyder and Associates to the podium, um, to, uh, discuss this agreement. Um, I'll provide some overview and then really, uh, Darren, maybe just highlight on the changes and sort of where we're at in, um, the wastewater plant planning process and how this is linked into that and, um, we can go from there. So, uh, with our industrial users, uh, we have about five, one of which is, uh, custom meats. Uh, it is common and, uh, I don't know if it's required, Darren, you can say if it's required or not, but, uh, it is required that we have, um, industrial sewer, uh, wastewater agreements with them, given the loads and the type of waste that they're um, uh, sending to the wastewater plant. It also, you know, consumes load at our wastewater plant, uh, that we're going to be, um, replacing here in the future. Um, so the resolution just simply, uh, asks you, uh, well, let me back up. Part of the planning process is getting the loading for the plant correct. Uh, part of getting the load for the plant correct is meeting with the, uh, significant, uh, industrial users and understanding what they're discharging now and what they're planning to discharge in the future. And understanding what is reasonable for the citizens to pay for as part of that load. Uh, understanding what's responsible for those users to pay for, both through the rates. And then if there's a mismatch, you know, we have to sort of come to an idea of who's either going to reduce the, the, the loading through pre-treatment processes or contribute more money, uh, to the plant as in cutting a check for the additional uh, capacity that they need. Uh, and it's, it's, it's a discussion and a negotiation and an agreement. Happy to report that custom meats has come forward, a lot of great ideas, a lot of new improvements out at the, um, the facility with pre-treatment and really worked, uh, with the city to, uh, address loading issues that's going to contribute to making the plant more affordable uh, than, than previously, uh, uh, thought. Because this is a amended agreement, uh, and because you had a agreement with them previously, I brought that to you. Uh, and I wanted to have Darren just go over some of the changes to the agreement that, uh, uh, would be relevant and, and something you might want to know about.
So, um, thanks, John. Um, so in the big picture, the industrial uh, agreement that we have up there is about thirty-two pages. And, um, we basically sat down and went through that line by line word for word. And tried to figure out what's antiquated, what's current, what makes sense, what doesn't. And then we sat down with two, both of the primary industries. Uh, Mary Ann's as well as Webster City Custom Meats, and we're still working with Mary Ann's at this point. Uh, custom meats has done some work at their plant and kind of knows better where they're headed, I think in the near future, now that they've done that. And in a nutshell, uh, they were able to give the city back committed capacity. How much capacity? Well, um, if you talk in terms of biochemical oxygen demand, which is one of the measurements we use to measure wastewater. They handed back about the equivalent of two thousand three hundred and fifty people. Because they were willing to, to go to two hundred pounds, and I won't get into all the details unless you want to hear about them, but two hundred pounds of BOD a day and their previous agreement was six hundred pounds. So in a nutshell, they did that with pretty much everything on the list. BOD, flow, on and on. So the good news is, speaking about the new development you just talked about. We said he custom meats handed back enough capacity to way more than offset that development. Which by my calculation is probably about five hundred forty-five people. So that's a good, that's good news. And they were cordial to work with and they were, they had really good constructive ideas. And Mary Ann's has as well. We're just not quite as far with them yet, or we're still working on, on that. Um, but they had a lot of good, good ideas and some of the ideas ranged from a pre-treatment agreement that had out of date, uh, descriptions in it. Um, we updated things like that. We did a lot of work for a lot of time. So a lot of valid questions. Uh, without boring you all, I've got pages and pages here. If you can't sleep tonight, I can help you, but I, I don't want to do that. I'll let you ask questions if you'd rather do that.
I think, I think just one, um, of the more, I think, creative regulatory ideas that Darren introduced to the discussions that, um, we believe is generous on behalf of the city, but also recognizes the, um, very, varying, um, levels of outputs of the industries is, um, uh, I don't want to call it a mulligan. Uh, I want to call it a, you know, if we do for some reason get uh, some high readings on a certain day, uh, the industries have a handful of those that can be utilized without, uh, significant fine. Uh, previously it was sort of, you know, you hit that number, you pay this much for good reasons. Uh, and Darren said, you know, I've worked on both sides of the tables in a lot of different states. Occasionally these things happen. If we have a reading or we have a sample, it's off, or we have something like this. Uh, let's create a system that allows them, um, not unfettered access and not just whatever they want to send, but if those readings get high, um, they do have some wiggle room to not get such punitive, um, um, fines. Now, it's not unlimited. It's not, um, uh, complete free for all, but it does, uh, allow capacity in, in those agreements. I think that went a long way with the industry to give back the capacity that is Darren, uh, Darren mentioned is, uh, worth two thousand people and growth. Um, and so we, we anticipate and expect that in other industrial sewer agreements that we'll be negotiating that those, um, types of generous gestures will be responded to positively. And if not, uh, sizable capital contributions for the plant will be requested from the users. Um, to defer the cost that citizens are paying to reserve capacity there. Um, and so that's, that's just one of the things that I wanted to highlight.
Absolutely correct. Does anyone have questions? I'm happy to talk about anything you'd like to hear about.
Their ability to do, to agree to a lower was due to advancements that they've made or things into place to, whether that's pre-treatment or whatever that is, um, in order to reduce that, it's not just a philosophical number they're throwing out to say, yeah, we can do that.
Correct. And it's actually a couple of different directions. One was they added equipment. And they added the ability to, to do better removal at their facility. So that was, that was a big piece of it. And a piece of it also was looking at the data, what have they been giving us? And it turns out the line that they originally were allocated was up here and they were really only giving us this. And with only very rare times were they hired. So right off the top, a lot of it was just a mathematics thing. And statistically, they really didn't need it. And then couple that with new equipment and new processes. It was like, you really don't need it. And they said, you are right. Here you go. And, uh, we're having those same discussions with, uh, Mary Ann's as well. And, uh, hopefully we can get, uh, on that same kind of arrangement.
Well, it's good to hear they've been able to, to track that, um, data better. I think that's been one of the difficult parts all these years and planning for a wastewater treatment plan is truly knowing what we needed. So it's a good step in the right direction, so.
And at this, like we've talked before, we don't want to guess. And, and, you know, in the big picture, I know we're, we're moving a lot slower than we originally talked. But when we move a little slower, we can make good decisions. And, and I think that's really important. And hopefully you're taking a little money in the piggy bank. At the same time, we're making good decisions and we can gain improvements like this. Uh, the next, the next one we're working on is, uh, Mary Ann's. And, uh, I can't, I don't have a schedule on that exactly, but we're trying to push that forward in the next weeks. And once we get to that point, this is a big part of the calculation of to, as to how big of a treatment plant do you really need? And, uh, DNR requires it and it is a mathematics thing with DNR, it should be. We can get all this pulled together and then our next step, get an agreement with Mary Ann's. Next step is to work with DNR and get an agreement on just how big we really have to build this. And then we can get the report finished up and then that puts you in line for funding and gets the process started. So I'm sure we'll, uh, be talking a lot more in the next months. But, uh, taking time to make good decisions. Any questions in kind?
We don't.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
Yes, please.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. J. Resolution authorizing the street department supervisor to seek bids and proceed with the lowest bidder for concrete crushing.
Need the council. So this is kind of a yearly process, uh, that brings forth to the council every year, and that is the concrete crushing, um. If you do members or contractors allow to bring concrete or asphalt, uh, to our pile behind our shop, um, throughout the year. Uh, this pile accumulates pretty large and then, uh, spring, we like to get a contractor in and crush it. Uh, this material we, you know, when I discuss this, it's used for sub base material, adding rock to our alleyways. Um, panel replacements used as sub base. Um, pretty proud of, I think, I know our past supervisor, Lainey Bauer, he kind of started this and I would say through the last ten plus years, I would say John can correct me, but I don't think we've had a contractor's head of haul in rock. And when you look at the price you're saving, I mean, I think, uh, we're getting for seven, seven dollars fifty cents for a contractor, you have to buy it at over twenty dollars. So considerable, uh, price savings and it's a good benefit, uh, for our contractors and they've been very happy with that. Uh, it keeps the progress going on all projects. So I'm a wayward buddy.
Hey, just out of curiosity, do we use about what we grained every year? Is the pile growing a little bit? Is it?
Sure, it was growing, uh, last year and it grew. We did a, uh, with the Fair Meadow Drive project, we didn't use, um, add much. Uh, with one side BM install. Uh, this year we, we've already started to, we've already separated it, um, for the Wilson projects and we are currently working on the Fair Meadow Drive, but piles were free, so we had to stop. But yes, um, we will take a big, um, bite out of it this year. Uh, and John and I are in constant communication on making sure we have enough. Uh, I think when we first started, we were doing a hundred thousand every year. Uh, we backed it down to sixty and we're able to stay ahead. Um, and it also, also being able to, uh, combine that with asphalt millings and stay within the DOT, uh, regulations. It allows that material to go a lot farther too, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. City attorney report update one thirty twenty-five.
Your favorite part of the meetings. Um, so I don't know if you guys are all familiar with this, the corner lot on Des Moines Street and Second Street you guys now own. Uh, it was thanks to the Reves family, they passed it through the lift organization that was able to then pass it on to the city, um, for city's use. So now we got that paperwork all done and you guys are now the proud owners of that lot. So congratulations. Um, the farm leases, we already discussed tonight, so we prepared all those and then the resolution that you guys already approved tonight for the final plot of links development, we also got that done, so. Any questions for me? I'm here to answer, so.
We need a motion to the Darren. All of them favor say aye.